Middle school. And this is my fourth year. Somebody was, another principal friend of mine was joking around the other day that just like kind of with teaching, they said your third and fourth year, you really get in a groove and it gets a little easier. And it's just not working out that way. But I guess we can blame a global pandemic on that. But I appreciate you being here. Another person I want to introduce and he'll probably interject a little bit as we go along is Drew Hines. And he is our go-to guy for technology in the district, especially on the educational side of things. And he has a good history that's going to help us out this year. He's been an online administrator and teacher. And so we're going to go to his expertise quite a bit. And so he might be answering some questions involving some of the technical side of things. So first off, I, my goal for these things are to be as open and transparent as I possibly can and to give you as much as I know at this point in time. I joked around before some of you came on that my staff is on here to heckle me and they, they give me a bad time about, I have a hard time. Sometimes I'm too transparent about what's going on. And that's just, that's just who I am. And so if I don't know the answer to some things, I'm just going to tell you and I, and I hope you don't take that as we're not prepared. But I just want to be, I don't want to give you a political answer. I want to tell you that this is the best we know right now. And we're working to, to figure out the answers to questions. The other part is every other day, either the Oregon Health Authority, Oregon Department of Education, the governor releases new information that we have to then digest and has to go to different people. And so things always change. So almost everything that we talk about is closer to what's going to happen, but is definitely a draft and always in progress. But we'll, we'll do the best we can. The way, the way I'm going to structure this is I'm going to, I'm going to give quite a bit of information, probably more information this time than the, the coming Q and A's that we're going to have. Just because I want to get this in front of you so that you can process and ask good questions. And so I'll be going through a bunch of stuff and then, then I'm going to start with the questions that people have sent to me already through Parent Square and through email and just running into people and what's on people's minds. And then anytime you have a question right now in this meeting, just add it to the Q and A chat box that's available. And if I don't get to it or answer it, Drew's going to take all of those and then he's going to give those to me. And if I answered it, I won't deal with it anymore. But then if I haven't, I'm either going to use it in the next Q and A next week or put together a document then to send to you guys later. So that's how, that's how we'll go about it. So I'm, I have at least 16 questions that I already have. So I don't know if we're going to get to, get to everything, but I'll get through as, as much as I can. And if not, I'll get, I'll get back to you. So and, and what we're going to do is probably through August and maybe even in September is I'll have these weekly forums, Q and As. And as we get closer to the school year, maybe I'll start refining them a little bit. I would love to get some teachers, maybe some teachers who said they were going to give me a bad time by logging on tonight. They'll volunteer to be a part of these Q and As later. But I want to, I want to have you interact with whoever you need to, to make, put your kind of, put your mind at ease about what the school year is going to look like. So the things we'll go through real quick is the state metrics. I'm not going to go into detail on that because most of that is a little out of our hands. But mainly the Fox Hybrid, Fox Online, those two programs, what we're envisioning for our Fox Hybrid schedule, both virtually and in person. And some important dates just to, to keep in your mind as we move along. And then just, and get into the questions. So on the state metrics, like I said, I'm not going to speak too much to this because this is just pretty cut and dry and what the state has told us. But we have to meet all of these in order to come back to in-person learning. And so the state has to be at or below 5% positive test rate along with both counties, Marion and Clackamas County. Over seven days. And then both counties that we serve have to be at or below 10 cases per 100,000 residents over a seven-day period for three consecutive weeks. And I've, I've heard this mentioned a couple of times, but for Marion County specifically, I think that means 35 cases a week. And so we can't be just in Marion and then there's a different number for Clackamas. But we can't be over that amount for a week before we come back in person. And so that's going to be mainly a district thing that they pay attention to. But a really, really important date for that is going to be October 5th. So to avoid the back and forth, as you've seen in other school districts across the country, we've just made the decision to be virtual for the first nine weeks, no matter what. And I think that is good for families and, and us as a school and consistency. Because that back and forth thing would not be good. But the really important date is going to be October 5th. That's when we're going to decide what to do for the second quarter of the year, which starts on November 16th. So we'll take a look in the district and we'll look at those metrics and make a decision on October 5th about what we're going to do for quarter two of the school year. And so you guys can plan, we can plan, and it's not going to throw anybody off their schedule because you'll know what's going to happen far ahead of time. And I'll, and I'll come back to that date again later. One thing I want to do is I want to be precise with my language. When I get questions from people or when I'm explaining things, I often forget that when we use online, that can get confusing because we named one of our programs Fox Online. So I'm going to try to use the word virtual, no matter what. So I'm going to say Fox Hybrid, virtual and Fox Hybrid in person. Because I don't want to say Fox Hybrid online because I don't want to confuse it with Fox Online. If you, if you weren't aware, and if you haven't seen any of the district communication, we, we have two main programs, Fox Hybrid and Fox Online. And, and one of the main things I've been advocating for, for a few months is options. I, and this is why I'm excited about that we have some options because no matter where you are in terms of at risk or not at risk or concerned or not concerned about the virus and everything, I want people to have options. And so this gives an option for us to keep our kids in Silver Falls School District with our teachers in a, in a way that works well for families. So that, that makes me happy that we can have some options in that regard. If, one thing you do need to know, if you haven't enrolled for Fox Online yet, is everybody is by default in Fox Hybrid, which is the option that could come back in person. If you didn't see any of that district communication, I need you to get ahold of me or somebody at the district level right away. We had to set a date for people to enroll in the Fox Online, which means they're going to be online for the year last Sunday because we need to know how many kids we have so we can build our master schedule. I need to know how many teachers I have so I can build my master schedule. And so we wanted people to make that decision. But if you missed that for whatever reason, we want to be, we want to work with you and we want to be flexible. We just need to know really quick. So if you could contact me or someone at the district right away, that would be great. So a couple of just basic differences between these. So the Fox Online is we're asking for a commitment that you will enroll in Fox Online for the year. With the caveat that in certain circumstances, if it's not working out and we've talked through how to make things better and we've tried different things, that there could be a switch. But as you could probably imagine, the switch back and forth would be really hard to keep our cohort small and our staffing the correct way. So what we're really asking is for that commitment for the year. The one thing that's important to remember is that it is taught by our teachers on the backend of this Edgenuity curriculum. And that, and that's important. Now, at the high school level, the Fox Online will be taught probably by all Silverton High School teachers on the Fox Online. K8, it's going to look a little bit different just because of how many different schools we have and all the K8s and then how the numbers are different everywhere. So if you're a, a third grader who opts into Fox Online, you may, and you go to Robert Frost, you may be taught by a Butte Creek teacher who has decided to teach all the third graders in Fox Online in the district. So if you opt into Fox Online, you just need to know that if you're a seventh grade student, they may be taught not by a Silverton Middle School seventh grade teacher, but by a seventh grade teacher somewhere else in the district, which is still great. It's in our district. It's just not a Silverton Middle School teacher. We did purchase based on, based on, well, a lot of factors, two things which I'll talk about in a little bit. Canvas, which is a learning platform. So think Google Classroom except for actually made for education. And then Edgenuity, which is a, an online curriculum that has been built and structured to work well online. And so the Fox Online and the Fox Hybrid will both use this Edgenuity curriculum. The Fox Hybrid will use a little bit more of our Silverton teachers' stuff in addition to that. The one thing about Fox Online also that you need to know is that we don't know all the answers to this yet, but the electives will probably be more limited in Fox Online than Fox Hybrid. I'm, I'm trying to maintain all the electives that I can in Fox Hybrid. They'll look a little different, but I'm still trying to maintain them. In Fox Online, it's very dependent on who the teachers are that are going to be teaching those courses. And so my guess from what I've heard and discussions I've been involved in is I don't think there's going to be the breadth, the, the breadth of electives that you would have if you were in Fox Hybrid. You'll still have access to the sports services and, and extracurricular activities if we ever get to do extracurricular activities in Fox Online. Fox Hybrid, so we're all going to kind of start out looking the same. So it's going to be Fox Hybrid and Fox Online, starting out virtually with Silverton teachers running it. And then over time, especially if we come in person, that's where it'll really start to change. But Fox Hybrid will begin virtual, just like Fox Online. It'll be mainly the Edgenuity curriculum as the foundation, plus the cool stuff that our teachers can add to that and personalize it a little bit. I'm doing my best to hold on to our electives as much as possible. Even band and choir, I, I don't want to hurt those programs. And so we're going to have to try to get creative with how to do that, but I still want to do those things. And I'm trying to match those with Edgenuity and if not, just make them anyway. Extracurricular activities, I've been texting back and forth with my athletic director and talking to James Rise at the high school and all the O S double A and seeing what our possibilities are there. We're probably going to mirror what the high school does in most respects. And if we can, we'll do our sports and, and our stuff like that in the spring, if possible. And then obviously Fox Hybrid will have all the support services, fed services as a normal student in our, in our school would, would get. So for many reasons, I, we spent all of July and part of August coming, trying to come up with the best schedule that would work both online or sorry, both virtually and in person. Because we want it to flow back and forth if we have to go that way. And for lots of different reasons, staffing reasons, not wanting to violate the cohort mandates that I have to abide by, not wanting to do too many subjects because that was a feedback that we got from parents. There was just too much stuff. And there wasn't as much focus as there needed to be. It's been a real difficult process and, and nothing is going to be perfect. And there's going to be positives and negatives to every schedule. But we, I believe that we've, we've come up with a plan that kind of strikes a good balance between maintaining the rigor that we need to, but then also factoring in the flexibility of what we're all dealing with in our homes and with our schedules. And so our model looks a lot like the high schools. And so if you were in that meeting last night, this will look a little bit familiar with, with some, some of our wrinkles to it. But it'll look close to that. So each, we're going to go by quarters. So there's four quarters in the year and the first quarter is the first nine weeks. And the second quarter runs from November 16th to January 28th to equal a semester. And so what we decided to do is we're going to have, so when your student starts, they will have four classes. They're going to, so this is an example, but it could also start the opposite way. They're going to have, so this student will have math, wellness, wellness, which is kind of a combination of PE, health, and, and just personal fitness, all kind of right there. Social studies and elective. And so they'll do that for nine weeks. And we're going to take the semester's worth of content and the best we can in a, in a strategic way, try to get that into nine weeks. Now, since we only have four classes, we can kind of squeeze more in there than we would normally be able to. And especially with math and social studies and ELA and science, we really want to make sure that we are staying on pace and we're keeping kids where they need to be to move on. Because one of my goals has always been coming to the middle school is I want our kids to go to the high school with all the options. I, I want them to get to a place where they have all the choices in the world. And then the high school's goal is when they graduate, it's not just to graduate, but when they graduate, they have all the options, whatever they want to take, whatever direction they want to go. And so we feel it's really important to dive deep and keep going with our core subjects. And going down to four classes can help us do that. Now, if this person, if this student's schedule was first quarter math, wellness, social studies and elective, and then he went to ELA Falcon Success Science and elective. If we're still in the same boat, second semester, he would start second semester with math, wellness, social studies and elective. So they'll take two nine-week sessions of math and wellness and social studies to equal 18 weeks, which would equal a year's worth of content. And so that's kind of the basic, basic layout. Because of this current situation with adding Edgenuity and Canvas and all these things, we are in the process, because one of the questions is when, when can I see my kid's schedule? We are hand scheduling everybody right now, 500 schedules in order, because of this change and just to get things ready to go and try to make things as accurate as we can. We will shoot for kind of mirroring where the high school is going to do their drive-through registration. And so in a couple of weeks, hopefully I'll let you know next week when those dates are. We can kind of do a Taking Care of Business Day, drive-through style, where people will get their schedules and who their teachers are and all of that. So we're going as fast as we can in that regard. So here, now switching to, so Fox Hybrid while virtual. So that was kind of the general outline by quarter. And this is very much a draft. We had a staff meeting this morning and talked a lot about how do we balance flexibility for people at home, people who have busy work schedules that are not there with their kids and, and maybe, and maybe kids who are really busy taking care of other people, flexible in the sense that they can do their work in a flexible way, but that we want them interacting with our teachers. We think that is the most important thing. That relationship with your teacher. And so this is definitely a draft, but this mirrors with kind of what we're doing as a district. And we'll hopefully each week refine what this looks like as we go along. But in essence, the four classes that they're enrolled in, each week, teachers would meet on Monday as teams and, and in other groups and push out their content on Monday for kids to start working on. Now, this content is, is different than what was in the spring. Meaning these Edgenuity modules that are built are, are made for a week's worth of work. And so if it's a unit of, of study, if they did it kind of on a normal schedule, it would take, you know, it would take a little bit of work every day to get through it. And if they're taking four classes, it's going to take work every day to get through the five days of class. But Monday, they would push that out. We talked about having an AG meeting on Monday to kind of set the course for the week. And then Tuesday through Friday would be a check-in with their AG that's a live meeting. We feel that's really important, especially at the beginning of the year, to have their homeroom AG teacher check in with them and get them going. As the year goes on, those might get shorter and shorter, but just that check-in, we think is really important. And then on Tuesday, they would move into a live synchronous instruction with their first period teacher. That also will be recorded so that if somebody can't make that, they can pull it up in their Canvas platform and watch it later. But again, ideally, we want them there with their teacher, interacting and, and learning together. Wednesday, they would do the same thing, but if with second period and then Thursday, third period, Friday, fourth period. Now, the rest of the time, they're still going to have things to do for their other classes. And that's what we talked a lot about as a staff today is what are we going to build into the Canvas platform that kids can be working on each one of those days? It could be a discussion board. It could be some collaboration as a group of students. It could be meeting as a small group with the teacher. There's lots of different things that we can build into that. But we would love to have kids connected every single day. But it still leaves the flexibility to get things done if it doesn't work out. Tied to that, ODE has been clear about attendance is going to be, they're going to basically define attendance as kids need to interact with course material in every one of their classes every day. And that could be, we still need to refine what that looks like, but that could be joining a meeting and being involved with that, doing some Edgenuity work, meeting one-on-one with a teacher. It could be a lot of different things. But that's how attendance is going to be taken. And there's probably a lot of questions with that, but we will spell that out very specifically in the handbook that we come up with to give you. So at least right now, you'll see it's, it's pretty bare bones because there's no times on it. The district also heard loud and clear from parents that it would, especially if you had multiple kids at home, it was almost impossible to keep track of all the different random meetings that happened all the time. I joke around with, with my staff that every time my wife was gone somewhere and I was, the principal was responsible for getting my four kids on their meetings, we failed every single time. It's, it's just hard, it's just hard. And so what we're going to try to come up with is a common meeting time across the district where kindergarten through second graders meet at this time, third through fifth meet at this time, sixth through eighth at this time, and so on. I just don't have those times yet to, to put down on this, but hopefully as we go along each week, I can add a little bit more to each one. Then the Fox Hybrid in person. This is the one that the earliest possible date this could happen is November 16th. And so if you have worries about exactly what that looks like, we've got some time on that. And that you will know October 5th, whether this is going to happen on November 16th. And if it doesn't happen, then it's probably not going to happen for a while after that. But essentially what that would do is then we would kind of turn that schedule from this way to this way. Then we go to that cohort model that was sent out by last name cohort A and cohort B. And so your student would then come in person to small cohorts that are divided up by grade in the building. And they would get live instruction in person on their cohort day twice a week. And then the other days, they would still be going along in the same system of Canvas and Edgenuity at home. So we believe that we can kind of flip back and forth fairly seamlessly where kids can still be working through stuff that's similar. But in the hybrid model, they'll get their live teacher there with them. And, and then if this happens, Fox Online will just continue as normal. And so this is just another way to look at it. And similar to the high schools, because we, we're the two schools that are specialized by subject. And so our big issue when we were trying to figure out our master schedules was how do we keep our cohort small? Yet still have, give options for kids to take all the classes that they want to take. So if we come back in person, it's probably going to look like this, where they come in for large block classes for their first three periods, probably 85 minutes about. But they get a lot of time with their teacher. And then transition to a fourth period virtual class sometime in the afternoon. We still have a lot of logistics to work out with the bus department and lunches and getting kids home. But that's probably what it's going to look like so we can maintain our cohorts and also offer all the classes that we want to give kids. And so some important dates before I get into some questions. August 9th was the commit to Fox Online or stay in Fox Hybrid date. Again, if you missed that, we want to be super flexible. So, but we really, really need to know soon. So if you can, again, email me, email anybody in the district to, to do that, that would be great. August 31st, teachers are back. We are going to put, teachers have so much to do to get ready in such a short amount of time. They come back August 31st. We've given them an extra week to get ready. But they have to dive into a new learning platform of Canvas. They have to dive into all this new curriculum in Edgenuity. And, and they'll be able to do it. It's, it's just going to be a lot of work. Now, a lot of them are doing what teachers always do. And I've been bugging them all summer and they've been coming in for meetings and stuff on their own time. And so they're going to pour a lot into it and, and we're going to make it the best we can. But yeah, it's a lot of new stuff. Within that, I put to be determined, so the first day of school is September 14th. And to be determined is kind of our, we call it our Taking Care of Business Day, where we try to take care of all the paperwork and all the logistics. Obviously, that's going to have to look different. It'll probably be a drive-through model. But that's where we'll take care of all the paperwork. We need to hand out schedules and all those kinds of things. One thing I want to put in there that's been asked a bunch of times, so this is kind of getting to the questions already, is, is there going to be kind of an open house type thing that's offered? And also some training for parents on these new systems? And we're going to try our best to do that. One of the things that I'll do is as we get closer, I'll try to refine these to maybe one of them will just be for incoming sixth grade families. So I can tell you sort of what school would be like in a normal situation and kind of what we're all about. But then have teachers create some videos and maybe do some open sessions with parents so that they can walk you through the real specifics of what your child's day is going to look like. Because I can talk big picture and I can talk a little bit about those specifics, but you, you don't need to hear from me. You want to hear from your, your child's teacher because they're the ones who are, are working with them the most. So I'm going to try to set those up where they're very specific and hopefully really practical. And we'll do some sort of open house thing, but I think we'll try to make it before school starts. Because that's kind of what we need. And also a technology checkout day will do, will mirror what happened last spring where we had a checkout process. I just don't know. And maybe Drew can talk about that later, but we'll have a technology checkout, Chromebook checkout and everything that you need from us. And we had that pretty dialed in last spring, so we'll kind of replicate that. First day of school for both programs, Fox Online and Fox Hybrid is September 14th. And then again, that October 5th date is just an important one to remember. That's the day we decide if Fox Hybrid will shift to in-person or stay Fox Hybrid virtual. November 13th is the end of the first quarter of instructions of those first nine weeks. And then that's when your student's schedule will switch to the second rotation, the second nine weeks of courses. And then that November 16th, the first, the possible start to Fox Hybrid in person. So with that, I'm going to transition to questions. And I'm going to start with a bunch of the questions that have been sent to me. And that, that reminds me too, if you send me, if you email me questions or put them on Parent Square, anything like that is completely fine. I want to, I just, I want to address those however I can. And so if I can't get to them right away, I'll put them in a document and, and try to communicate those with you as soon as possible. And the district's doing the same thing on kind of a bigger level too, if you want to take a look at those. One of the major questions is what will a typical day look like for my student SMS when it is virtual? So I'm assuming they're meaning when it's in the Fox Hybrid virtual program. When it is virtual? So I'm assuming they're meeting when it's in the Fox Hybrid virtual program. Hopefully, I covered that a little bit with those general schedules that I talked about. What my guess is going to be is that you're probably going to look at. Four to five hours of work a day, and that's an estimate. Now, some of the kids who are a little quicker with that stuff might reduce that a little bit, and some who take a little longer could be a little longer. And some days it could be a little more than others, or maybe it depends on the unit that's pushed out. Some are more difficult than others. But I would kind of approach it that way because we have four subjects. You know, an hour a day per subject is somewhat reasonable. And that's going to be a mix. That's going to be a mix of the live synchronous meeting in the morning, individual activities that are done. Some group stuff, working with the teacher, that's all of that together. So it's not all just staring at a screen. It can be some other things too. But that's what I would, I would roughly say. So enrollment, somebody asked if we aren't interested in the online or the hybrid model. Being offered to the district, will we be able to re-enroll our child? If and when traditional classes are reinstated. So the short answer is yes, as long as you're in the boundary. So if you're in the Silverton Middle School boundary and you do homeschool or you do a charter school and you want to come back, you just re-enroll. I've said this over and over again all summer to people who've been asking me what to do. I said, you need to do whatever you, whatever works for your family. And I and I truly mean that, even. Even if you want to homeschool or if you want to go to charter school or whatever you want to do. This is especially this time right now is a time to just decide what is right for your family. And if you have more questions, more details, ask me, but I really just want you to do what you want to do. But yeah, you can re-enroll. Now, we we might need to talk about when to re-enroll, maybe like at a nine weeks or something like that, but. Yeah, you can definitely re-enroll. What about lunches during the first nine weeks when we're virtual? So I heard, I was in a meeting this morning. And and so I'm hoping I can say this, but see, there's the two transparent part. They, what I heard was that we're going to start with lunch pickups and the two in town pickups will be at Mark Twain. And Silverton High School. So I don't have any more details than that in terms of times or anything. But that's what I heard this morning in a meeting is they're going to start with pickups at those two spots. And then they'll have K pickup spots, but I'm not sure where those are yet either. And that could change to delivery, but I'm not sure yet. Next question is if we aren't comfortable with our children being masked all day, so this would be if we did hybrid in person. What accommodations are available for them? So I I think that really depends on the reasons, medical or otherwise. And I don't know if I'm going to freelance on that question or not. Because I, that's definitely one that the state and the district will address. As of right now, obviously masks are required by the state. And I think getting an exception for that would be a process and I'm not saying it couldn't happen, but. That's one I think I'm going to lean on the district for. I'll pass the buck up. Will the school be supporting elective such as band in either model? So in the Fox Hybrid model, yeah, we're going to stick with band, we're, I mean, virtually. Choir, CTE, coding, video tech, we're working on making it close. Yeah, we're trying to keep our electives. So we'll do the best we can to make them creative in this kind of a system, but we want to keep them. What if we have a bad internet connection at home? I'm going to, I'm going to kick that one right to Drew. Hopefully he's here. Yes, he's here.
We, I mean, if you live in a valley. Or somewhere where there's not great wifi or a connection to wave broadband, we have a list. Of internet service providers we can help you with. And if you could reach out to the school district right away or or through Brett or provide a Q and A. Information, we can reach out and try to help. But there will be devices and in some cases cellular hotspots if there's a need, so. Hopefully, we'll be able to get everybody connected, but we know that there's going to be places in Silver Falls that. Are just really difficult to get folks connected, so we'll do everything we can.
Yeah, thank you, Drew. So that's a good thing. We have, we have some names of people who struggled last year with internet connection, but yeah, if that's an issue. Just email me and we'll start that process right now, because we might as well start it right now, so we're ready to go. Another question, will there be elective still? Yeah. And then when will kids find out about them? So again, yeah, we're right in the middle of having to hand schedule five hundred kids, so hopefully in the next few weeks. When I'll send out a date, we'll pick a date next week for Taking Care of Business Day so that we can, so that you'll know when that's coming. Although, again, the start of school is a little late anyway on the eighth than usual, later than usual. And then we're pushing it back a week to September fourteenth, so we do have a little more time. Can a student take any elective or class that is available in edgenuity? So one of the things people have been diving into some of the edgenuity stuff and seeing that there are a wide range of electives in there. So the the issue is, so I guess I'll say at at least at first, probably not. And the issue is that every edgenuity course has to have a teacher on the back end of it. So when they're doing, even though they're doing a lot of this curriculum that is kind of. Self-paced and the kids are moving along with it, our teachers are right in there watching it happen. And and intervening and helping kids and pulling them into little groups and working with them and. They're doing that the whole time. And so to do an elective on top of everything else that they're doing is a lot to ask now. Once we get rolling and it seems like I've got some, I mean. There's always, I'm not going to call it anyone specifically this time, but there are always teachers who I have to say no to because they do way too much. But if it looks like it could work and there's a bunch of kids who want to take some cool elective, I'm not, I don't want to shut the door on that. And so I'm going to leave that open as a possibility, but but right now until we really dive into it. It's probably not going to happen immediately, but could happen, because there's some pretty neat things in the in the course catalog. We got to keep Chromebooks for the summer, so will the Fox Hybrid program be automatically installed in the Chromebooks? So my guess, and Drew can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think anything needs to be installed on the Chromebooks because they are web based. Programs, both Canvas and edgenuity. Is that right?
Yep, can it's a, they're essentially websites that student would go to, parent would go to to be able to log into Canvas. And then the inside of Canvas would be the edgenuity curriculum. We did use offsite internet filter last year called Securely. And I know I'm a parent of a former middle school parent and filtering at my home would have been really nice for the district to provide. And now you do, if you have a district device, you have offsite filtering. And so there'd be a little bit more information on that. Something I didn't mention earlier to Brett is that. Google Meet sessions, you can call in to phone using a phone. So there's always that option to listen in and I think you're going to find that. Teachers on those Mondays and in the afternoons when they're not teaching, they're going to be making contacts with families and. Phone is sometimes the lowest tech is the best tech to connect with, so hopefully that helps a little bit.
Yeah, thank you. This is why I got Drew here. And so then, yeah, and we'll set up a Chromebook checkout day and all of that, so. And that'll be good. This question is how will my son be able to get his special needs tended to by a one on one person this semester? So we just got, again, we just got new ODE guidance yesterday. It's a very long document that I haven't gone through the whole thing because I've been in meetings and and just getting ready for for this. But from what we know now is there are some, there are some. Some kids that we can bring in on a limited basis, in limited number for a limited amount of time in a given week. For for some specific reasons. So. I think that we're going to be able to set up special ed services and ELD services and have some at risk kids come in for various reasons and. And all of that, obviously in a very safe way, meeting all the protocols, but we can bring in kids for face to face stuff. And that includes also, I would say, parent meetings. I'm fine for whatever people want to do. If people want to have a Google Meet or a Zoom meeting or come in to. Have a face to face meeting and we can spread out or we can, if it's a nice day, we can go outside. We can, we can do all of those things. So we're going to be able to access any resources that we have in the district, your student will. If there's special ed or they have a five oh four or whatever it may be, and we'll be able to offer that. Obviously with some conditions, but that's, but that was a good, that was good news. What happens when a student or teacher gets the coronavirus when we are back in person? That is the question. So we had to develop a blueprint plan to submit to Oregon Health Authority. That outlines our plan for how we're going to conduct school safely. And then what we do in terms of health protocols. A lot of that is set by our nursing team at the district level. For the things that we do and our responses and we're we're lucky to have those resources for sure. But basically, what what would happen is when we do the Fox Hybrid in person, we take. You know, we have roughly a hundred fifty, a hundred sixty kids in a class. We split them in half. And do cohort A and cohort B, so now we're down to seventy five. Then when they come, we take those seventy five and we split them in half again. And half of them take these three classes and half of them take these three. So we're down to thirty seven, thirty eight kids. So in that cohort of thirty seven, thirty eight. If two people get the coronavirus or tested positive, we have to move that cohort virtual. Now, you can imagine in a town this size and with the interaction outside of school that could happen. I'm guessing that if one cohort goes down and has to be virtual, it won't be that long till other ones are as well. But that will be our approach initially is we take that cohort and go virtual and then just kind of assess where we are. But the district will be very involved with that and but that's kind of our initial approach. And hopefully with the cohorts being that small, we can kind of limit that from spreading at least on on our end. Will there be a welcome or first day orientation for new sixth graders? Yeah, I want to have, I mean, I want to have multiple, hopefully, maybe one bigger one where it's me and some of the bigger. Systems things and then and then drill down into individual teachers. And you having an opportunity to interact with them and just see what their plan is in terms of their classroom. But again, that's a big ask and a short turnaround time for teachers coming back August thirty first. And then planning some open house stuff within two weeks. And my teachers on here are probably. I don't know how happy they are that I just said that, but we'll be fine. Well, we we want you to feel as comfortable as possible and so. We just want to be open and transparent about where we are. So a couple more questions here. So if the kids do the strictly online, so I'm assuming you mean Fox Online. And you go forward later with opening up school and you do activities. Will the online students be allowed to participate in those activities? So my, from my understanding so far is yes. I I don't want to have kids not be involved in things if there's things going on just because they chose to do one option. And and I think, and I think I'm okay with with saying that and I and I will check to make sure and if I'm not right on that, I'll I'll correct that, but. I wouldn't want. That to be limited. Just because you chose an online option. Will we have a meeting for our students on a five oh four plan to plan their schedules? Yeah, once we build our our. Once we get our master schedule populated, then we'll start, we're going to start having case managers and counselors reach out to. To the people who we know want to really talk through what that schedule looks like. So for sure, yes. So where's the writing? Will it be tied in somehow? I don't know if you mean physical writing or just writing. There will be writing. I just don't, we have, I haven't dove into that curriculum enough to know if. There is actually going to be a part of it that says, take out a piece of paper and actually physically write. Or if they're going to do it in a Google Doc or or what have you. But we've especially focused in sixth grade the last couple of years on doing more writing. And I don't want to lose that because I think that's really important. And so I'll just work with our sixth grade team to make sure that if it's not embedded in that edgenuity curriculum. That we we still keep that focus because they have to have it. They have to have it. So what ELA is, so the question is what is ELA and what is Falcon Success? So ELA is English Language Arts, so that's going to be your reading and writing. Falcon Success is going to be, I can't remember the exact title of edgenuity, but. Basically, what it's going to be is kind of an academic success and digital citizenship course. But with our stuff inside of it as well. And so a lot of times we'll put in there. How to do, you know, how to do PowerPoint presentations and and how to properly do a Word document. And I will call out Jackie Renaud. So Jackie Renaud, when I stole Jackie from Robert Frost and had her come to the middle school. She helped and so did Kim Bruckner. Work in Falcon Success to just kind of assess where sixth graders were and what they needed. And actually, at one point, we thought, we kept seeing this trend of, and this is not shocking. Middle schoolers not knowing how to email an adult in a proper way. And so we took some time in Falcon Success to teach them, how do you email a teacher? Don't put the entire body of your email in the subject line. I mean, even something like that, you know. And those of you who've emailed your children know what I'm talking about. So it's. We're going to cover a lot of different things in that class, but especially now when we're online. We do want to do some explicit teaching about how do you conduct yourself online? And how do you be a good digital citizen and then whatever other skills that we need? And then another set of eyes on kids too, to make sure they're moving along the way they need to. So one question is, so a student could have math first and third quarter, but not first and second. So the way we have it set up now is, yeah, we and we debated about what to do. I know the high school is doing something different. And the high school is doing. If you have math, you're going to do it quarter one and quarter two. Or quarter three and quarter four, from what I believe. We we decided to not do that mainly because especially at this level. I was really worried about a student doing math quarter one and quarter two. And then going a semester and a summer. Until they took math again, or the opposite, they don't take math until quarter three. So they've gone from the shutdown in March thirteenth all the way to February without taking math. And so. And I, and I hope it, I hope it will work, but that's kind of how we decided to do it is rotate it and then. There are some options in edgenuity to actually push out some practice modules. Kind of that are very independent and they're a little bit shorter. And so if there's a concern from a parent about a kid getting behind. Or even if somebody wants to do some extra stuff. From the guy I talked to today, I think we can actually push out some small practice modules to kids. To kind of just keep them in the mode of math or ELA in that in that gap that they have. So once meeting a person, how does the school plan to handle situation of a student or teacher who develops COVID? I think I addressed that. The big issue for us is going to be that teacher, if they're in a small cohort on cohort A day. Also teaches cohort B day. And so then what do we do in terms of the sub situation? And I know the district's working on that. And we have some time before that happens to develop a plan, but we're going to have to have a bank of subs that. That probably are teachers and subs that we know really well, who can fill in, because that's going to be a hard scenario for sure. When returning to school potentially on the sixteenth, will the students transition to each class? Or will the teachers move to the students? So the plan is right now is that if we're going to, I'm going to have sixth grade, seventh. Grade and eighth grade in different areas of the building. So it's actually one of the only times our weird building is going to be beneficial because we're so spread out and so separated. So sixth grade will be in one section, seventh grade, eighth grade. And then within that, I'm going to split those even further. And so basically, teachers will kind of have their home base. That they normally have, kind of where they have all their stuff and they can run their virtual classes. But if we come back into person, they're going to. They're going to, they're going to travel over to their area and stay there all day. And so either within the three classrooms that the kids are going to move. Or the teachers are just going to move in those classrooms. I'm, we're not sure which, but we have some time to kind of work through those logistics. But there's going to be, they're going to be contained in that area. I do still want kids kind of moving around. I don't want kids sitting all day long in one spot. And so we'll try to incorporate some movement the best we can, but they won't be moving all over the building. Just to try to keep those cohorts separate. Would you do, be doing the state testing, statewide testing? And if the kids are online, who would that, how would that work? I, that I don't know. I don't know what the, what state testing is going to look like. I, I have no idea. I haven't seen any guidance on that yet. I don't know if they've dealt with that yet or not, or if I'm just paying attention to right now. But I'll definitely find that out. Will we receive login account info for the platforms? Actually Drew, can you talk a little bit about what it would look like? I know in Canvas, there is a parent button kind of thing that you can put. What does that? Look like from a parent's view when they get into Canvas and Edgenuity?
Well, in the effort of being full transparent, as you put it, you know, we're still figuring this out. So, but we, there is a observer mode that can be inserted into if. You have an existing email on file for that parent. That that can be included in our integrations. So that they get a notification as to the courses and they'd be able to see their child's postings, not the other children's postings, for example. We're not a hundred percent sure what that's going to look like. This data integrations start with master schedule of what courses are going to be offered. And the teachers and that generates the shell. And then our content from Edgenuity gets loaded into that manually. So. It's kind of difficult to see what that's going to look like quite yet. But there, I think the best as being a parent of, of an online student. And as an administrator of an online school, the best thing you can do as a parent is log in. Well, first of all, check in with your child every day as to their progress. And then at least every week, you should, parent over shoulder is something that middle schoolers, I don't know if you've, you asked, but. You know, you be the parent over the shoulder. You, you, you sit with them and say, okay, log in and show me the evidence of your work. Show me what you're doing. So the best evidence or the best way to interact with your child sometimes is to have them actually log into their account. And see exactly what they're seeing. And that might be the best approach as a parent to help them out. And again, we'll be working on the onboarding of parents and some other supports we can give to parents. Thinking about their role as a learning coach, specific to middle schoolers. We get closer to the school year, we're still putting some of those things together. Hopefully that helps.
Yeah, I don't know about you. I've got a to-be freshman and then to-be seventh grader, sixth grader, fourth grader. And my, my learning coach style with my. To-be freshman and to-be seventh grader has met with a little bit of resistance, usually something dad, what are you doing? But that's okay. Just keep, keep going forward. So one of the, another question is if we opted out of getting a Chromebook last year, can our student get one this year? Yeah, for sure. Definitely. Drew, did you have some, did you have something?
No, the checkout day is a be kind of drive-through style. Like you said, we had that dialed last year. So you'll go back to your resident school to get your Chromebook. And the check-in, checkout process worked great last year.
One question here is, will there be regular grading? And will there be a way for parents to monitor assignments and what's missing? Yeah. So that, so the big difference with the spring, I mean. And I don't want to minimize what we, we did. I, I felt like we did a great job given the circumstance, but. Man, it was crazy. And it was, it was really difficult for everybody. Teachers and parents and, and everybody. The difference this time is we are, I mean, our goal is to continue with our learning. And making sure that our kids are not going to get behind. And they're going to keep moving through what they're supposed to get as a sixth grader and a seventh grader and eighth grader. And so yeah, grades will be real, attendance will be real. And, and we still want to be flexible with people's circumstances, 100%. We, we all get it. But we have to, it, it's, it is real. So, so yeah, that's the, I mean, that's the short answer to that. And yeah, I think within Edgenuity and within Canvas. And within Wazzle, within our grade book, there will be way for you to keep track of, of your child's work.
Yeah, and then there too with the teachers that are online, the, the information from. Canvas will pass to Wazzle. So the parent tools that we always had. Would be in Wazzle. And that, that is new integration that is just happening. We have. At blistering pace, you know, sometimes it takes months to set these things up. And we have great staff and we have great support. We've been working. As Mr. Scott Drew said, around the clock for the last couple of months. To put some of these things together and it's, and it's coming together. Can't wait to see how the teachers make these courses a home. You know, because though the content, potatoes is there, the content will be there, but they, they make this work.
So one of my teachers who I think is just officially nominating herself to be involved in the next Zoom meeting. Is texting me saying. She said, no. She's saying, parents can see missing work on Canvas. Upcoming assignments on Canvas and grades on Canvas. So, and then she said, no, she's not going to be able. So I'll, I'll do one more question. And then again, any questions that I haven't got to in the, and I've been just going through the. The Q and A chat question area. We will, Drew's going to copy and, and paste. And then I will. Put those either in the ones I address first next week or in a Q and A doc that I send out. So maybe two quick ones. Will grades be posted in Wazzle? Yes. If we already own our own Chromebook, do we need to get one from the school? I don't think so. Is Drew, is there?
You know, I, I'd recommend using the district equipment because it's going to be set up with all of the. Extensions and applications on a Chromebook that are, we're going to be using. And it also have filtering. So I know as a parent, it's a little bit cumbersome to set up that filtering in your home. And this is one benefit we can offer our families in either online or hybrid.
Okay. And I think I have time for one more and then, and then Drew, you can then close the meeting. Well, one more, and then I just want to say something really quick, but is there a possibility of outdoor school for sixth graders? If not, will two be held the next year? So I haven't, I haven't thought that through. We've gone through, so Kevin Zinchenko is a retired teacher who still works with us a lot. And she's been nice enough to do the outdoor school stuff for me. And we've gone through the process of planning on having outdoor school. Now, we don't know what that's going to look like and we don't know if that's going to change, but we, if we can, we will do it. And if it all gets canceled, then yeah, I mean, I would, I think we would talk about doing two next year. That'd be a lot, but I also don't want to have a whole class miss out on that. So thanks for bringing that up because that, that is in process. So we're, we're trying to make sure we secure that. We just don't know what the final answer is going to be. Unfortunately, with a lot of things. And, and that's. The one thing I struggle with this the most on a personal level is I, this, I, I don't. This is a great thing to have for technology for us to be able to do this. But none of us signed up for this. I don't want to be an online principal. I want to be in the hall. I want things happening. I want to go to games. I, I want to see. You know, like when, when our staff went around and we, we put yard signs in every eighth grader's yard. That was the best day of the year last year by far. Because we actually could see our kids and it was so fun. And so just know that our whole staff wants, I mean, we want to be in person with your kids. But we know that we need to wait until things are right to be able to do that. And that we're going to do everything we can to make it the best we can, knowing that. What is best is to have in-person school for most kids. So. We just want you to know that and we'll work as hard as we can. And, and I will be as open and transparent as I can. I'll tell you everything I know when I know it. And, and hopefully we can just keep doing this every week and feel a little more comfortable the closer we get to when school starts. So. Thank you, everybody for coming. And I'm going to tentatively say next Thursday night. Although I want to talk to some other principals and maybe adjust some of when we do our, our Q and A times. But so tentatively, next Thursday night at seven. Unless you hear otherwise. So thank you, appreciate it. And have a good rest of your evening.